Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of lead.
Okay, gents, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Prove the agenda, is there any changes? Counsel have anything? Vicky, you have any changes to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Prove the minutes of the November 5th, 2025 regular meeting, all receive them in your packet. Is there any changes or corrections needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 5th meeting?
So.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. This brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, we will then move on to reports and presentations. Six A Police Department Monthly Report, Joe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we get the October 25th, 2025 police report activity. Nothing significant, I have a lot of the averages. Uh, when you look at, uh, medical emergencies, we're at 29 of those, we average about that 30 a year. Another seven lifts assists on there. So we're going and helping people get left up, a lot of times it's elderly with no injuries. Uh, juvenile problems was at 10. Typical this time of year with, uh, most of that's all helping out at the school. Uh, animal complaints, we kind of had a run of dog issues, barking, loose dog type of stuff. So we got most of those, one of those was an animal bite. Uh, so we're kind of dealing with some of that. Uh, 18 agency assists, um, 22 suspicious calls, another suspicious person calls. Overall, a little bit quieter for October, which is kind of normal, a lot of the guy, a lot of guys, a lot of us take our vacation October, so we don't have quite as many guys running around the street either, so that goes down to a little bit lower numbers. Looking forward, uh, you'll see these, we made up these for our seasonal parking. My plan is, is I think, we made these up today, my plan is, is probably Monday, Tuesday next week overnight, I'll have the night guys slap them on, uh, cars parked on the street just to give them a heads up. And then I probably will, won't do anything until after holiday weekend, I don't want people getting confused, so after the holiday weekend, the following week, we'll keep throwing these on cars until December 1st. Talking to Ben, sounds like some signs will maybe be in, uh, not next week, but the following, and those get up. So kind of give people a good education, the, what the winter parking change coming up. We'll work with everybody on that.
Can I say that?
Yeah, you can just pass down.
Thank you.
So those will be, um, those orange ones will be, uh, on everybody's cars, you'll see, and then we'll come up with a different color, uh, for the warnings, a different one for citations when it comes to that down the line. Typically, we have like a generic, um, winter parking one we, we come up with, just sort of easier, a little less fill in the blanks, more checkbox, plate name, case number for every ticket. So, um, we'll come up with one of those once it gets closer, but that's what we're gonna hand out down the, just so everybody gets an idea. And then we're gonna plaster it on social media and stuff too, as it gets closer, heavy too, so people have an idea. So that's our plan with that. Any questions regarding any of the parking or recommendations that you'd like to see us do different?
It, it's, so it says use calendar date as of midnight, not 12:01. So, that can be a hard thing for people to comprehend. It's the day that they plan on not wanting to be on the street. So, the next morning, if they're parking at 8:00 AM on the even date, they actually want to park on the odd side.
So if they're parking at, so it doesn't take effect till midnight, so if they're, yeah, so if they're parking at 8:00 PM,
Yep.
They want to go when, when it hits midnight, they want to park on that side of the street.
Okay, so they have to think ahead.
Correct.
That's, I think, the thing that we need to drive, drive home is not, what is today's date, it's what's tomorrow's date.
So I think what we'll do too is, um, when it comes down to when the ordinance takes effect too, I think we're gonna make the one real clear one for, because that can, that one there covers all the parking issues. The, I'm gonna have a different color, a lot of colors. I'm gonna have another color one for the odd even ones. When we hit that, or even get close to that, on those odd even streets, that probably spell it out even clearer for them.
Yeah.
So, these, this one's just a generic one, so the guys don't have to, the guys can just go and slap them on as they're cruising around at night. And then as we get closer, I'll come up with the odd even ones, and then the one, people that are parked on the, um, the no parking whatsoever, you know, the eighth street ones, those ones, we'll probably have two separate ones then, um, just to really feed it in. This one's just gonna be generic for the first, up until December, then come December, we'll work with people. We'll, we'll get it squared away, like I said, hoping to have everybody educated before December 1st or therefore.
And you guys understand it clear enough, or are there still questions within the department, like?
No, we, no, we got it, no, we're squared away, our guys got it. We're good that way, let's just get everybody else on, everybody on board. Same thing as we've done in the years past, just a little bit different. Probably good.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Joe. Public Works Department, Ben.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our street sweeper update, so McLean had a sweeper for 10 days down at their facility. They did a bunch of testing and making some necessary adjustments. We did receive that machine back, and its performance has definitely improved, and the issues that we were having appear to have been resolved. Uh, we have been using it to sweep leaves this fall. We did take it into the Birch Street Project area to test it on some roads that would be much dirtier than what we would see on a springtime cleanup, and it did perform as we would expect it to, so that was good. Uh, once spring comes and we do a full cleanup with the sand and grit that comes with, with all of that, we'll know for sure that it's operating the way that it should be, and hopefully we can close the door on the issues that we were having, and know that we have the right machine moving forward. But right now, it feels good, so we're happy with that. Storm sewer catch basins, those are being cleaned out with the sweeper, this is gonna be ongoing until freeze-up occurs. Plow truck repairs, we did have a Sander motor that was replaced on T-21. T-2, we have, uh, incorrect oil pressure reading in the dash, so the pressure was manually checked on the motor, and that is operating where it should be. The issue is in the wiring between the sensor ECM and the gauge, so we're currently working on that in our shop, getting that fixed, but the truck does run and we can use it. Uh, roof replacement was completed on our public workshop, that turned out good. We installed a secondary stormwater culvert under the gravel road near one of our stormwater ponds in the southeast section of town. We brought some classified to build that road up, so hopefully that takes care of some of the washout issues that we had when we had those big rainfalls this summer. Birch Street Project, we installed all the remaining stop signs and street signs for that area. Our winter calendar parking signs, those have all been ordered, and they'll be installed as soon as they're here. Tentatively, it looks like the first week of December for installation of the posts and the signs, that's what we're hoping for. We don't have the signs yet, looking like next week they'll be here, but as soon as they're in our hands, they're, they're gonna be going up on the streets. Arena, we have our weekly ice maintenance of edging and cutting to maintain our proper ice thickness. Uh, compressor system has been working without issue, it's been good. Everything else at the building's been working good up there. Uh, JC Park Playground Equipment has been installed, we put three new pieces in that park. Um, across all of our parks, the leaves and grass were mulched and cleaned up for the season. All the mowers now are clean, serviced, and stored for the winter. Campground, we took down two trees which have been cleaned up. And our brush pile, we did get that ground again by the local contractor, no cost to the city. So this arrangement is definitely favorable for the city and for them. Hopefully it continues to work for them in the future, so we can keep doing this, so. As long as that's working, we're gonna keep grinding that pile.
Okay.
Any questions I can answer?
Comments? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
City Engineer Report, Keith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, just a quick update on the 2025 project. As you know, that is basically done for the, the year. There are two small items that we're still trying to get accomplished yet this year. Uh, one of them is a small retaining wall that's at the upper end of a driveway, it's actually, it's actually Ben's driveway, uh, on Pine Streets, we're trying to get that accomplished. Uh, the, the retain wall guy is supposed to come in right after Thanksgiving to do that, so as long as the frost doesn't go down too bad, we're hopefully, we'll get that done. Uh, and then there was unfortunately a, uh, a private catwalk that was missed at the northeast corner of Pine and Fifth that we're trying to get done as well. That one may not happen, we don't have any assurance anyone's gonna come back. Concrete wise, they do it, however, speaking with the landowner, she doesn't really care, she doesn't use that. The only issue is that's where the mail goes. So, as an alternative, we might put a temporary mailbox, you know, up kind of at the, at the right of way essentially where she could, and she was fine with that approach, so we might have to do that if needed. But those are the two things we're working on to try to get taken care of, and then pretty much everything is buttoned up and ready for the, for the winter, and then we'll come back with punch list items in, in 2026. So that's where that is at. Um, the other thing is Trunk Highway 71, we're working away on the, on the alignments and roads and all those kinds of things preliminary for that. Uh, after some discussions on issues, uh, with Vicky, we're thinking that perhaps a workshop with the council might be a good idea to kind of get you involved early on, so we can talk through a number of, uh, just issues around the project in general, get your, get your direction as to how you think you'd like to proceed on some of the things, such as, we've got a number of right-of-way issues, there's some narrow roads again, Eighth Street South, this time on the other side is one, is, is a problem through there. We've got some areas that we believe it's plotted that, but we don't have any document that we can find that shows that that land came to the city, so we might have to do some title search, so it'll be, you know, that might be a little expense that we'll have to do to get some title search done on some, a few select properties. Uh, 10th Street South is another one of those. The, there's irons that are at the 66-foot right, right of way, but we can't find any documents that show that that ever came to the city. So, not sure how it happened, but, um, you know, a long time ago, but we can't find some of those things, so we're, we're looking for that. So we might need some of that. The other things, there's a various, various amount of street widths and, you know, kind of what we want to do through those areas. In particular, thinking about like Seventh Street South, where it comes into Getty, that'll turn through there by next to Ron Danks place. That's kind of a whole can of worms in that area, what to do. First Street South, you know, that first block, uh, next to the PUC, kind of how we want to deal with that, with parking and street widths and those kinds of things. So those are some of the issues that we'd like to just sit down with the council, show you some graphics, talk about it, and get your input before we go too far down the road, and, uh, so that you, you have that input on that. So we're kind of hoping, you know, whatever works for you, I mean, it could be, I'm guessing it would be about maybe an hour's worth, I would say. Um, whether we want to do it before a council meeting, if, I don't know everyone's availability to do that kind of thing. Or we could do a special one, like maybe in between the, the two December meetings, that week in between, do something in there, so whatever works best for the, for the council. But that's what we were thinking, might be a good idea to kind of get you up to speed. Plus, we can kind of able to show you a little bit about where Mindot's preliminary layout is, you can see some of that as well, so I think, uh, some dual purposes there.
Okay. Thoughts?
Just have Vicky coordinate with all of us.
Oh, well, that first December meeting, we got that.
The students.
We got the students here at 5:15, so that one's.
And on the 17th, Mindot's gonna be here too, so.
So maybe do it on the 10th?
We can do it in between on the 10th, if that works.
Time are you thinking?
Whatever works for you, so I'm, I'm totally flexible.
Me, anytime after 5:00 would work.
Anytime works for me.
It's that time of year, I, I've got an open calendar, so.
Vicky, could you send out a reminder, I don't have my phone with me tonight to record that.
What do you say at the?
The 10th?
10th?
At 5:00?
Yeah.
At 5:00?
Or do you want it later?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. 5:00 would work with me.
Okay.
5:00 works, we can, yeah, I, I would think an hour, we should be able to go through everything, so.
Okay, December 10th at 5:00.
Questions for me?
Any other questions for Keith? Thank you.
Thank you.
Six D Airport Board Report, Vicky.
So the Airport Board met in regular session on Wednesday, November 12th. Uh, they did get an update on the box hanger project that is proceeding, and, uh, all the other, all the paperwork has been done on that end for the grants, and now they're actually in construction. They did review the fee schedule, and their recommendations will come to the City Council along with everybody else's on the 17th of December, I think is when we do the fee schedule. They looked at potential users for the box hanger, whether our existing FBO moves to the new box hanger, and the old box hanger gets rented out, or if he doesn't move, the uses for the new. So, and what they've been tossing around ideas for that. And also, we did receive notice, uh, before the FAA had decided or sent out a, a notice that taxiways couldn't meet per, or perpendicular to the runway. They had to like turn and be parallel for a while, and that, so that a pilot has to make a couple maneuvers before they access the runway. And so that was something that had to be done right away, but now they've pushed that down into the future a little bit, so. We don't have to worry about that, that might be like 28th before we have to worry about that. So, uh, that's it for the Airport Board, um, yeah, things are just moving along out there, so it's looking really good.
Questions? Concerns? Okay. Move on to our action item, 7A, approved pay app number one, Everstrong Construction for the Box Hanger Project.
So this is the first pay app for Everstrong, this is for the, for that box hanger. As you know, the contract price for that hanger is $852,944.80. Uh, they've completed about half of the work, that includes materials that have been delivered. Uh, so after retainage, the amount due for this request is $392,433.24.
Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to approve pay request number one?
Some would.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7B, approve adjustments to deferred assessments, County 112.
This is the County 112, and you guys did talk about this before, and it kind of got brought up because, you know, as you know, we placed those on those township parcels, but, and then the policy committee met. Well, now the PUC actually took formal action, and they did meet, and they did agree to reimburse the city for half of those costs, which is about that $33,489.57, leaving that same amount, uh, due from the city, whether we assess that, collect it, write it off, whatever. And so I just wanted to bring it back to get kind of final resolution on this. Um, whether the, the PUC is requesting that the city write off the balance. That is their recommendation, simply because of the age of the infrastructure that's in there. So, based on the age of the infrastructure in there, I did apply the amortization for the useful life, meaning that there would be a balance left of like $20,000 instead of the $33,000. So that, that's kind of an option. There's an option, you know, just to clean the books and we're never gonna collect it, there's that option. So I just wanted to bring it back here now that the PUC has taken their final, final recommendation, and they'll be paying us half of that money back to reimburse us for our costs. They want, so they're paying half, they want us to pay half, meaning the balance and not collect it from the owners. That's where it stands right now, and I'd kind of like to get it resolved because we have the one piece that's coming into the city, how do I deal with that one? And there's one for sale, that they're like, that impacts the sale price and everything, so we kind of want to get like a final resolution. So I don't know what your thoughts are, if you're prepared to make a recommendation, if we just want to stand with what you had said before, or how you want to proceed.
Comments?
What was the, did the policy committee have an opportunity to talk to PUC, or PUC just took action and they said, okay, well, not.
Policy committee, you talked to PUC, and then based on that comment, um, on what happened to the policy committee, then PUC took formal action, going along with the policy committee. That 50% split.
The policy committee was saying it's 50% split and.
Yep.
Not, we'd write it off, that wasn't.
We didn't discuss necessarily about what we'll do with our 50%.
Okay.
And I think the last discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, was is, um, we were just gonna assess it back to the properties? Is that what we kind of talked about?
If we, if we did nothing, it would still be out there, and it would still be owed by the property owners to be paid when they came into the city. So that's where it stands right today.
Okay.
The, the half of that, our half, and the PUC is requesting that the city do the same as they did, basically, and covered that half on behalf of those.
Yeah, the PUC can't tell us what.
Well, I agree, I, I understand.
They would like us to do that, but, um, see, the PUC wrote off half of it because they can recoup that money in whack-a-sack fees when them properties come on. So, for them, it's a, they're not, they're not owed anything.
Different scenario.
Right, totally different scenario. So, for us, if, are we gonna, we want to write it off, or do we want to assess it back?
And then we, if we assessed it back, it would be just after that depreciation value, it ain't gonna be the full amount.
It's up to you guys. It's up to you, do you want to do it at the original amount, or do we want to do the remaining useful life?
I would think the remaining useful life, I mean, otherwise you're charging them for something that isn't really gonna last its useful life, I guess. I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, but either way, I guess, I'm, I think we gotta build something back.
The basic, the basic useful life, Vicky had figured it out and I wrote it down, and she probably gonna mention it anyway, was the amount would be $20,093.
Yep.
So, either way, there's $13,000 that.
And, and that's calculated based on.
No way, no matter what.
It's based on a 40-year life for the road and a 70-year life for the water and sewer.
Seven.
The current value of what is being, uh, considered for the useful life that might come back to the city on these two parcels, the one that's wanting to annex is how much versus the second that is sitting on it?
The one that, the one is, would be, our share would be $11,000, and the other one would be $5,500.
That we could recoup with these two sales?
If we, if we assessed back our entire half.
Our entire.
What about the useful life?
There's six total parcels, there's six total parcels that add up to $33,000.
Okay.
So now the one that's for sale, that, I mean, they wouldn't pay the assessment until, again, they would be annexed in, so they wouldn't have to pay it on sale.
Right, because what would happen, any of them, when they're in the township, they don't pay. When they come into the city is when it becomes due. The one that's for sale has a failed septic, so they wouldn't be able to replace that, they'd have to come in and hook up the sewer. So that was all part of the.
Hook up.
So they'd have to come in.
Mm-hmm.
So if we wrote this off, would we see more likely how these people may want all annexed in, and then we start collecting property taxes by them coming into the city?
That's kind of what I was looking.
Are they more likely to come in, or are we gonna sit there and carry this $20,000 bill for 30 more years, and now it's not worth anything, and we're still, still gonna assess them 20 grand?
Because it's been 23 years since this all started, and nothing's ever happened with it, so. Do we want to drag it out another 15 years, 20 years? Because a couple of them out there aren't going anywhere.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's definitely, um, it, it's one or the other, right? We either write it off, or we, you know, just move forward, but, um.
I like Joe's idea though, too, if it might be an incentive for them, you know, to hook up to sewer and water, and not have to worry about, you know, pumping their septic and having to worry about water tests and.
The one thing is, is if we annex that whole area in, we don't get any tax benefit for five years. You gotta pay that to the township.
That's great.
Long term.
Future.
Long term, right.
Yeah.
But just so everybody understands, that first five years, you're not gonna see any tax benefit.
But the discussion on the annexation is not for the entire lots that people have came to you?
Um, the annexation is just for the first parcel, and then possibly the sale parcel, then that'll leave. And that's completely surrounds another one that's gonna get pulled in, so then there'll be three left.
Yeah.
So we, we just don't annex it all, just, we just don't want to deal with that challenge?
Yeah, Warren brought that up too, and, you know, there is potential to negotiate with the council an orderly annexation agreement. But then what those do is they usually amortize in over a period of 20 years, and so I don't know that that's, makes a lot of sense to do, or we just take them as they want to come in.
Yeah, I hate to, I mean, they don't like to take anything, you know what I mean? But in the same token.
There's a lot of ifs, ands, and buts.
We certainly are providing services that we, you know, that they can hook up to, never been paid for.
Right.
But.
How much ownership changes have been there, been out there in those past 23 years, that when this was put in, these people, I mean, obviously, they didn't know about it, we, well, we, we obviously remembered, the PUC maybe didn't, but again, we had leadership changes and stuff there too, that things fall through the cracks, so.
Yeah. And that's, that's part of what we talked about too on property ownership, you know, who is there, who wasn't there.
You know, maybe if we do write it off, then we inform those property owners that, hey, this is an option. You know, if they're not tracking that, they may want to hook up.
Yeah.
Well, when you annex though, it's, it's more than just the utilities, it's, you know, the city tax and all the other things that come with it too, so.
Yeah, because they're already getting all the other city benefits, they're just not on water and sewer.
Nor paying city tax.
Or paying city taxes. So what's the council's wishes? I'll make a motion, we just write it off, clean the slate and start new, it's been 23 years. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions, motion carries, four in favor, one against. 7C, request for reimbursement for reinstallation of pavers.
So, uh, this has to do with the Birch and Pine Project. Uh, Tom and Mary Kittleson at 524 Pine Street have submitted a request for reimbursement for work they commissioned at their property to restore their private sidewalk after construction. Uh, the sidewalk in question is from the city sidewalk to their front door. It is a paver sidewalk, I think we removed about two feet, uh, maybe somewhere between two and four feet up the sidewalk, uh, and stacked the pavers along it. After the city sidewalk was poured, the resident hired Tree Top Nursery to reinstall the pavers, um, and then they went like 10 feet up in order to get the grade correct, because the grade was a little bit different. So they did a very nice job. Uh, the owner had, did state that he asked if the pavers were gonna be replaced, but whomever he spoke says they didn't do pavers, we don't know who he spoke, if you talk to the concrete contractor or whatever, I checked with StanTech, uh, and the inspector on site, and it wasn't us or the city that he spoke to at that time. But in any case, the issue was on the punch list of items to be completed on our end at the time that he did the work. Uh, the invoice from Tree Top is $2,001.92, of which 1,900 is labor. Uh, and the owner is requesting some participation from the city in the form of an assessment reduction. So we're gonna have that discussion, he's here tonight, if you have, you know, I mean, we would have had some costs to replace those pavers, I don't know what that cost might be. Um, I did check with the city engineer, he said if we were to have replaced 10 feet with concrete, it would have meant about $700. But, of course, pavers are a little bit different thing. So his, his request of the owner is some, some type of participation from the city. I mean, because he had the work done, and then take that in a reduction and off the assessment.
Discussion?
As far as the reduction from the assessment, that's doable, something we'd consider?
You mean, would we?
I mean, doing a reduction from the actual assessment, that, I don't recall.
We just, we just amend, we, we would amend the, the final assessment that, that he was set. I mean, it's, it's doable to do, it's just I don't know what the amount is and that you think would be appropriate.
Gotcha. Okay, um.
And this is Mr. Kittleson here, if you have any questions for him.
Basically, nobody from the city ever went out and looked at any of it.
Well, we knew it was, they were stacked there and that we had to replace them.
Right, but not. Right, but not ten feet.
Well, I talked to, I did talk to Keith and he said that ten feet was probably reasonable because they had to pull those up in order to get the grade correct.
Okay.
Because the road was a little different, so they, to me, I have a nice smooth transition.
So, if we would have poured concrete, would have been ten feet or would have been the whole way? Would have moved all papers? Like, how long is that driveway or that, uh, walkway?
Sidewalk's probably about from here to the block, approximately.
Thirty feet, thirty, forty feet?
Maybe a little farther than that.
And this was, this was all on his property.
So, and then I said, we were the first group that was done to those pavers after two months, wait, you know, it is after, then that first November, I said, already just do it.
So, we would have done ten feet if we punch listed with our concrete pour?
Ten feet would have been, would have been fine, would have been fine, so we, we planned it here, we just didn't have the opportunities to do it, to do it. We had two months, I mean, in fact, the whole block was done, two months for two months, and that was the only spot in the entire block that had to be, or repaired or anything else. So, saying that, the opportunity would not be a less. It's a very large project, because you know, there's a whole lot of moving parts.
Uh, one thing, um. How much of the sidewalk was actually on our street right away?
Of this?
Yeah.
It wasn't. It was all on his. Because it was from the back of the sidewalk onto his property.
Okay.
From the back of the city sidewalk.
The reason, the reason why I bring it up is, you know, we ran into the situation where we had sidewalks that were exposed to aggregate and everything else, and we said, no. You know, we didn't replace it. You, you get regular concrete and that's it.
And that is, that is why I got the estimate from Keith of what concrete would be.
Right. You know?
We have water, we call it capital. There was, that would be on private property. Normally, we'd be replacing, you know, there.
With like?
Versus in the right.
Yep.
Okay. Well, any other discussion? Comments? Solutions?
I don't know if we have a solution. I mean, he's, he's done the work there with, with what he did. I think if we would have had to replace it, our cost would have been seven hundred dollars. I mean, that's what we'd, we'd credit them for. I mean, we're not paying the whole bill, obviously, because that's, you know, more different from what we would have done. So, I mean, we could have replaced it, but to the tune of that seven hundred dollar estimate that Keith provided.
But Keith, you said it was, um, it would have been replaced with like material and concrete wasn't what was there.
Yeah, the concrete part is actually cheaper. Concrete price is all about, you have like less than three hundred dollars to be, in, in just the height. So, I escalated it for the, the assessment.
Okay, thank you. That makes a difference, okay?
Okay, any other comments? Discussion? Do I have a motion? Do you recommend any participation or a different solution?
I feel like we need to decide on something.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know why my mind's just telling me it's seven hundred dollars. We know, we know that for certain. There was certainly, I'm sure, inconvenience to have somebody come and do it.
I would want to just look at the cost area, don't it? That helps. I mean, if let it happen, it's, it's, maybe stones is, if you've ever put them in, you know, it's a game to ask, it's a lot. I put them in initially, twenty years ago. My old kids, and I couldn't do it again. Seventy-six dollars, and it's still, it's still, it's still.
I would entertain a motion to, um, agree to an assessment reduction of a thousand dollars of the invoice.
Okay, we have a motion from Brad. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Scott. Any other discussion?
I'll just make the comment as a previous neighbor and also kind of relation. Um, I'm gonna abstain from this.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries two in favor, two against, one abstention.
It's a fail.
Fails.
You said motion carried when you started.
Oh, no. So, with that, we move on.
Are there any other motions?
I'll, I'll make, I'll, I'll make a motion to participate with the, uh, assessment reduction of seven hundred dollars based on the cost estimate provided by, by Keith.
Okay, we have a motion by Joe. Do I have a second? Chair will second it. Discussion?
But didn't Keith say that they would do it in like material though? So, obviously, concrete's cheaper than pavers.
No, he said three hundred would have been concrete, seven hundred if we, we did the pavers, is what he said.
Well, then, well, it was, okay, I missed it. I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, signify as saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries three in favor, one against, one abstention. Thank you. Seven D, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one oh six, approving deferred assessment.
Um, you have an amended report in front of you tonight for the deferred assessments. Uh, you know, at the November fifth meeting, you approved several special assessments on Pine and Birch. Since that date, we've had two additional requests that have been received and approved. So, the attached resolution approves the deferment for parcel five eight eight seven two and five eight eight three eight. Resolution is twenty twenty-five dash one oh six granting the deferment. And these are both based on, um, age and income.
Okay, we still had time to get this on the tax rolls?
Yes, we do. We, we contacted the county. We're gonna send them in tomorrow.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one oh six, Phil? Motion by Brad. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, done against. Unfinished business, Old Mill Apartments.
Just wanted to update you a little bit on the Old Mill. Um, haven't had a change since the last minute or the last meeting. The owner is offering it for sale. I have been working with a developer that is interested in redeveloping that piece along with the entire block. And so, he'll be in contact with the other owners along the block. Um, we've also looked at some various funding scenarios, any assistance from the city or the state. Um, this could be a pretty complicated project because of its location and, and if we're gonna demolition and you have asbestos, you've got the river, we've got foundation issues, a whole plethora of things that'll have to be pulled together to make this happen, but I do have a developer that's very excited and interested to work on it, so. Um, I'll be back in touch with him again next week. I think he's getting his first grant child right now in Florida, so he's, he flew the coop. And so, uh, but I'll bring more information as we know more. I mean, it's, 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 it's kind of a exciting project to work on, so.
Okay.
Well, somebody wants to.
Any other questions on that? Otherwise, uh, eight B, SCDP grant application.
So, the SCDP grant application, um, we have submitted it. It's his, came through the city for review, it went to Central Minnesota Housing Partnership for review because they're gonna be administering it on our behalf if we get it. And, uh, I think we've had, we, our goal was to do twenty-one houses. We've had forty-three requests, so we've got more than double the requests than we likely will have funding for, but that will make our application score higher. So, uh, that was sent in. Um, they will have, they'll be reviewing it in-house at the state until the seventh of January, and then they will announce on January fourteenth who gets to submit a full application. So, then that's not really due until fifteenth of April. So, we've got some time to put the final application together if we get selected, but I think we have, we have a good chance. So, that's good. The EDA did allocate some funds towards it and that gives us points. So, we did as many things as we could to get points, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, any other questions?
So, we can get at least through the, uh, potentially through the application process. If we get selected, that still don't mean we get the funds.
What's that now?
I said, it still doesn't mean we get the funds just to get through the applic, to be able to submit the application.
This first is a pre-application, whether they'll let you submit a full application.
That's my question. So, it doesn't mean we're getting any money.
Right.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Just keep trying.
At it go.
Okay, eight C, Airport AIP and AIG Grants.
This was just kind of a follow-up and I think I touched on it in the report and we paid the bill, but, um, all the grants, the federal, the state grants, the credit apps for reimbursement, uh, are all ready to go into the state as long, as soon as I get the signed, signed invoice or signed check for the one you approved tonight. Um, all the concrete where it is done, the building is going up, and then in the spring, there'll be the final paving and everything. Which is kind of good timing because the airport board is also working on a fly-in for next summer, and so we'll have this new hangar at that time, so. Um, it's, it's going along, uh, as good as can be expected, so that's good.
Questions? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Oh, advertisement for ambulance director first.
Um, that ambulance director position has been posted and advertised, and the personnel committee or an ad hoc committee, uh, will be interviewing after December first. So, they have, I, we posted it internally for the existing EMTs or paramedics to file a letter of interest and a resume, and we also posted it externally if anybody outside is interested in the position, so. Um, typically, I don't get actual applications or interest till the last two or three days. I have one so far, which is good because I really didn't expect to hear from anybody till we got closer to that December first date.
Okay, any questions about that? Then we'll move on to new business, local sales tax amendment.
So, this is something that I'm bringing up simply on, on the Trunk Highway seventy-one project. As you know, we have sales tax there. That was in two thousand eighteen that the voters approved the implementation of the local option sales tax, which at that time was expected to occur in twenty twenty-four. And, and so then in, uh, in twenty nineteen, we actually got the legislation through the House and the Senate, and then we began collections in twenty twenty. Uh, at that time, the total estimated cost to be funded by the tax were about five million, and we put a total of ten million with bond interest and everything. Thought we had a good cushion. Then COVID happened and a delay in the project happened, so now our estimated costs are actually higher than that ten million. So, we have some options. We can reduce the scope of the project, which is kind of those side street connections that Keith was talking about. Do we really want to do that? Uh, we can fund a portion with tax levy. We can fund more of it with special assessments. Uh, we can, or we can increase the total amount, that ten million that we're capped at, we can maybe increase that to like fifteen million. We wouldn't increase the number of years. We would just collect it long, or collect it, our cap would move up, so we would be able to fund those other projects. Now, the thing is, if you want to do that, we need to have a bill at the legislature in January of this year. So, I'm bringing it up to you tonight so you can start thinking about that. If you want to turn me loose again in the legislature, I'd be happy to do it. Um, but then if we do that, we would, we would go down there, we have to get a bill introduced in January, and most of the sales tax bills, they don't act until May. If we're successful in May, it would go on the ballot in November. If we're successful in November, then we have to pass an ordinance. We'd probably start collecting in second quarter of twenty-seven. So, that kind of gives you an idea, but we need to know, you know, it's gonna affect the scope of our project whether or not we do this. If you want me to proceed that way, I will, but I didn't, I didn't know how you felt about it, you know? Some people are saying, once we hit that ten million, we're done. We have to scale it down to that, we're done. And other people I've talked to, like, said, we're collecting it faster than we thought we would, so let's, let's fund it with sales tax. So, I'm not saying you have to give me an answer tonight. I just wanted to bring this up for you to be mulling it around.
Anyone got any comments?
I think that way, everybody pays for it instead of just city residents that are on that highway that, that's a pretty well-used highway throughout the, the state that I'm, I'm a hundred percent for increasing it.
That's kind of where I'm leaning, is on the increase, because, yeah, we can reduce the scope, but those side streets aren't going away.
No.
They're gonna have to get fixed and eventually then everybody's gonna get assessed, and we're, and to pay for that, then we're gonna have to levy, so basically, two of them options are already a catch twenty-two. If you either do it now or you're gonna do it later. And so, in my opinion, yeah, we gotta go to increase the collective sales tax.
And, and there's no guarantee that the legislature will approve it, and there's definitely no guarantee that the voters will approve it.
Right.
So. But we're, and we're coming off of a, a two-year moratorium at the state for asking for sales tax, so there's, they're piling on right now, so.
Does that make a difference in, are we just like a number on a list?
So, what happened in two thousand eighteen was so many people had requested, they changed the law.
Right.
Because ours actually fit well within the new law, we got approved and a lot of people got kicked out. So, they're all coming back now. So, if, they, they look at each individually. They look at regional significance and, and we, um, because it was Trunk Highway seventy-one and it was a state project, yeah, the state was like, yeah, let's do this, so. And now we're not asking for an extension longer. We're not asking for a new tax. We're just amending an existing cap. That's all we would be doing.
I, I personally think we need to, um, move forward with amending it, increasing it.
Yeah, I agree.
Here's the one thing is reducing the scope is kind of silly because you're gonna have a whole new constructed area that we did this year, and then you're gonna have a whole brand-new somewhere, and then you're gonna have all these beat-up one-block sections in between the two. To me, that doesn't make any sense, so that wouldn't even be in my scope, so. Increasing the total amount would be the only way I could see that's even viable.
And if it fails, then we go to plan B or C.
Yeah, well, then it, then it's on the voters.
No.
Well, or the legislature if they don't agree to take us off.
Right.
Then we gotta pivot from there.
Yeah.
And, and any of you are welcome to go testify too.
You were so good at it though. She's so good at it.
I know.
So, do we do anything? I mean?
No, it's just.
Sounds like everybody's.
General consensus, basically, to.
If you guys are comfortable with that and you don't need me to bring this back, I'll just start working on it now.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't, didn't hear anything otherwise, so. Okay, consent agenda, schedule of claims, unpaid claims of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and fourteen cents, and September checks, paid claim slash payroll of one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Is there any questions about the consent calendar as presented? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, moved.
Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Last minute discussion. Call the question. All those in favor, signify as saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items?
Just a couple of reminders, and it got brought up earlier, that special meeting with the community engagement class is at five fifteen on December third, which is at the next council meeting. Uh, also, the public hearing on the twenty twenty-six budget and levy is at six thirty percent PM that night. I don't have the dates on here.
No.
Those are December third. And then the Trunk Highway seventy-one project, uh, Terry Odegaard, who is the project manager for this project, will be here to present to the city council kind of what the advisory committee has looked at and, um, kind of talk, walk, walk through that project and what we're thinking that's gonna be looking like and kind of bring you up to speed, uh, now that we kind of have a layout and a drawing of that. So, that'll be at the regular meeting on December seventeenth.
Okay, questions about either one of those three items? Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Call the question. All those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.